No, not that one. Not even about the dinghy, it's about the...
Yeah, no, I know. That's the only thing I did. Can't find anybody, this poor guy can't get anybody.
You're leaving me.
Okay, so I... The first thing on the order is a proposed resolution for authorizing the sale of beer, wine, and spirits to F.F. Max Brewery.
I agree with that.
Name of event, summer concert kickoff, Thursday, September 18th, 2:00 p.m. to midnight, F.F. Max Brewery. Any questions?
The only other question that I have is, are they doing any other concert series to this, or is this their only one?
No, they are.
Okay, so that's what, okay, so I didn't know if there was, so this is just for tomorrow?
Just for tomorrow.
And everything else is all set? Okay, perfect.
Oh, so we're not going to put this in committee?
No.
Not unless you have a meeting tomorrow.
I saw two I want to put in.
I think we did have a great event this past Saturday, that was awesome what they did.
Okay, very good. No questions? We'll close that and go on to proposed order number two, sponsored by Council Member Costello Tesser. Would you like to...
So, I think this one was kind of more of reactive than proactive piece of legislation. I think it's pretty clear for us, especially with the clerk's office, in talking to the majority leader and minority leader, that they know whose name's going on what. So, this one really, I don't, I don't have any interest to sponsor anymore, after talking to the, you know, the original person that sent me this. But, I mean, if you guys want to keep that and you want to make it more specific, but, I mean, I think that it's self-explanatory, so, I would like to pull this one.
Okay.
I mean, if it comes back up, maybe, but, I think it's, I think we all understand that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I got a question on that. Now, when you're put on something, you know, let's say it's legislative legislation, do, do they give you a notice like two or three days in advance that it's coming your way? What are you getting in advance that you know your name, you already have a piece of legislation?
So, they're saying, so if they come down from the law department and there's no original sponsor, do you contact the majority minority leader to let them know what piece of legislation's coming down?
I know, a lot of times it might be a good heads up, because a lot of times they might...
Yeah, I mean, we could call too, we could certainly call the majority minority leader.
Especially if it's something important, you know?
Yeah, that's right, yep.
Is that something...
I mean, we usually send it out...
No, I don't think it's something that we have to legislate, I think it's something that, you know, the clerk's office can handle. I think it's duplicating...
When you see something that you think would be, you know, of those reports or something...
Well, they don't know what's going to be controversial or not, but...
Well, they still, they've been here long.
And they, and they do, and they do.
But they, they normally send an email anyway, so...
So, like I said, I just think that's duplicating, duplicating words of what we already know.
Okay. We'll close that and go on to proposed resolution number three, the Dinghy Bar. Fundraiser, Thursday, October 2nd, 4:00 to 8:00. Location, the Dinghy Bar, 728 Plant Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Any questions?
What's it for?
A fundraiser.
It's a fundraiser, not for me, but I'm closing the side road on the side of the...
Well, you don't know if I should go or not, so I don't know who's fundraising.
Well, I don't think I can really...
Invite only. So, if you get an invite, go to a fundraiser.
And Jack wasn't invited, so, it's not for him, no, I'm just kidding.
Any other questions? If not, we'll, we'll close this and go on to proposed ordinance number four. It's waiving residency requirement for the position of auto mechanic. Mark, would you like to speak?
Yes, so, I have had two people resign in the last 10 days, one's a mechanic and one's a laborer. So, right now I have four labors going into the fall and winter season. We cannot survive with four mechanics going into that season. So, one kid, I have to hire him as a laborer to get his CD. Kid from Rome was the first one. They're both willing to come in and live in the city within the next five to six months. And the mechanic that I met today from Dowsville, I think will be an asset for me and the city of Utica. So, I would appreciate if I could get them all.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to back Mark, because we've been looking for mechanics up at Stonebridge, they're impossible to find. So, if he's got two good mechanics, we've had an add-in for six months and we haven't got a qualified guy, just to back what he's doing.
And also, the last two months I've hired seven labors, one was from Rome, the other six were from Utica, and I have not had an issue with these guys. So, we are going in the right direction. And this will fill my capacity with mechanics. So, it would be good if I could get them.
Very good. I just have one quick question. How long does it take to get a CDL license?
Well, they need to read the book, and then there's so many hours of a class that we do in-house, that we have a guy that does it, to get their CDL. So, it could be anything from two months, six months, it all depending on. And I really don't want them to have to struggle during the winter to get their CDLs, so...
Okay. I just was wondering how, what the timeframe is, because I don't have my CDL...
They need a year to get them, that's what it is.
Oh, okay. Okay.
You got yours?
Is it open class?
No. I know, I know some people do, but not many. Any other questions? If not, we, that'll take care of the next one as well. And...
I'll sit.
Any other business?
The only thing that I want to add was, so the mayor did veto the graffiti legislation. There was a couple, there was a couple components that he would like changed. I did get justification on what he wanted and what we can change, so that I'll, I'll let his veto override and then reintroduce that piece, to kind of specify how we can, his language, I don't know, what did he say when it came down? It was, it was too broad for what he, I can't remember specifically what he said in his, in his veto. No, I don't. But, we did clarify a couple of things, so I'll be reintroducing that at the next council meeting. So, I hope to have the same support.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, any other...
Is there anything in committee? That's the sale of the URA property?
Yeah, ordinance three. Ordinance three.
Three.
Step back, well, it was.
Brian, any update on this, or...
Any update on what?
Um, the ordinance approving designation of Monocelli Health System is an eligible and qualified project sponsor? Or is that...
Uh, that was just part of a land spot, I think it was worked out...
Okay, so nothing else changed? Okay, all right. That's it?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.
We'll come to order. City Clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Beetard, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Calasimo, Testa, Lamedico, Geruzzi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is there a motion, a second, to dispense the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion.
We have two people to speak for the public hearing. First one is Francis Brown.
Public public hearing today?
No, we have a public hearing today, too.
You're speaking on the public hearing.
Yes.
Go ahead, Francis.
My name is Francis Brown. How much more does the city have to give to MBHS? Isn't it better enough that we had to give up some of our rich history downtown? Why are we willing to trade our city properties where the Utica Police Fleet Maintenance Facility and its impound lot sits for an empty lot where the old H.J. Bradley Corpse building used to be? The other particles MBHS wants for the empty lot is the auxiliary parking for police officers to park their personal vehicles. Don't you drive your vehicle to and have safe and adequate parking? The secure parking area is also used for guests of the court system. An opinion to fill up them spots is to allow city court administration personnel, New York court officers, and other persons that make our court system work behind the scenes to have an adequate, safe parking. This will not just affect the police station, but the courthouse, too. Utica needs our court's system to keep justice in place and to keep our check and balance system. The Utica Police Department Fleet Maintenance Facility was completed only in 2005. I do not have the exact numbers for it being built, but I can say in 2004, the city authorized $7.1 million in serial bonds, of which 1.5 million was for reconstruction of various city facilities and buildings. In 2005, another $170,000 of that bond was moved from one cop capital project to the police maintenance facility project, H-53197211C17. If somebody would give me the information on that, I'd give you the exact numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis.
Our next speaker is Bodan Rabarski. Did he say this was by the hearing? Yeah, public hearing. This is a...
This is a public comment.
This is...
This is a public comment.
This is a public comment.
That's okay.
Bodan, honestly, if you were the only two saying, is there anybody else saying up your public commenting period?
No, that's all right.
We got a public comment.
Close the public comment, or close the public hearing and then open up to public comments.
So we're going to close the public hearing. And now I need a motion, a second, to pull out of committee. So we can vote on it? A second.
Since you're standing up there, you got a vote.
Ordinance of approval for the designation of Mohawk Valley Health System as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of the general municipal law for the purpose of purchasing the portions of certain properties shown on...
Ziv A.
Votes, please.
Nine e's adopted.
Enough public comment period. This gives the citizens an opportunity to come up to the podium and discuss issues pertaining to the city. Each individual will be given three minutes. Our first speaker is Bodan Rabarski. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bodan Rabarski. I live in a beautiful North Utica neighborhood, as Sam calls it over the bridge. I'm here to talk about, a couple weeks ago, I had asked our city clerk, Melissa Shortino, if we could possibly have our flyers such as this put on our city's website to notify people in the city about our Neighborhood Association meetings, which I'm one of four people that run the North Utica Neighborhood Association. And so she said she'd take care of it. And then the other morning, I got an email from the IT department saying that after consulting with the IT department, we were devised that they were unable to do so, that only directly related city official business can be put on the city's website. So I looked on the city's website, and on the bottom of the city's website, under menu, is a community page. On the community page, you have, says, "Utica starts with you." And if you scroll down, it talks about the city government, the Utica population, culture, education, and it also has a link to Neighborhood Association. And it lists all seven of the Neighborhood Associations that are already on there. All we're asking for is a link to the associations, nothing more. And that's why we have an IT department. Now, unless the city is using Windows 95 and they can't do it, I don't see what the problem is. It's all I gotta do is provide a link to the Neighborhood Associations that's already on the website, so this way, people in the city can see our flyers, whether it's North Utica, West Utica, or any other associations. And it gives the people a little more transparency, they can see what's going on, they can find out when the meetings are, and anything else that goes on with the city. And, you know, and provide a lot more information about it. You got, you know, people coming off the throughway, they want to find out what restaurants to use, what hotels to use. You got Travani coming into the area soon. You got a e-bike business coming into the city soon. People are gonna be looking for housing, you're gonna want information. You know, we gotta have a more user-friendly website and make it more accessible and more transparent to the people. I don't know how often, you know, you check the website, but the city's website really is not very user-friendly. And that's all we're asking for, is just some minor adjustments, and I don't really see why it'd be that difficult. You know, it's to provide a couple links on something that's already there. We're not trying to, we're not asking to reinvent the wheel, we're just trying to ask for some adjustments to it, and that will be it. And we're already providing, you know, the mayor's secretary sends out media advisories and press releases to our Neighborhood Association emails that we send out to all our members to the associations. I personally sent out probably 100, 125 emails to 125 people every time we get an email from Rebecca DeValle to notify people of different press releases that she sends out, which is great, the people love it. I get emails constantly thanking me for it. And it's great transparency from the government, and that's, you know, what the government's for, to serve the people. We're not, the people aren't here to serve the government. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Francis Brown. Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Francis.
First off, don't you think I tried emailing, calling, and other means of reaching out to our city's officials before my first speech on February 26, 2025? All unanswered or signing with my scum lord due to his status. So, a $200 fine will allow you to spray foam the corner of the building, of which is a supporting wall to your structure. It will allow you not to complete the repairs, or to make it a habitable structure, even though the rotted hole was so large that I could put my camera in it. If you don't believe me, check it out on the Utica The Good, The Bad, The Ugly on YouTube. Apparently, spray painting a city curb, illegally parking numerous times, breaking a city tree will get you a street sign for your shop that your LLC is not even four months old. Yet, I am talking, yes, I am talking about Habano Cigars. You know, the proposed Resolution Number Five, last meeting. This is also submitted to the council the day prior, avoiding the three-day Thursday rule, also was not online till the morning of. Why was this done? Because someone thought I was going to be incarcerated. That same person is an investigator for the United County Public Defender's Office that had access to my case, just like access to the video that would have cleared me of the charges before the trial even started, that came up missing. I know the video exists, due to me putting in a complaint and being informed by the supervisor reviewed that video. Therefore, Jimmy Diaz of Habano Cigars, where did that video go? For that one, the city should just give him a neon sign on the taxpayers' dollars. I also see how quickly they put it up. Drop more important work that needs to be done in the Department of Public Works to make the mayor's friend his sign for his bad that he has done. For all the criticizers of the Department of Public Works in Parks Department and Parks Department... ...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
We'll come to order. City Clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Beetard, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Calasimo, Testa, Lamedico, Geruzzi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is there a motion, a second, to dispense the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion.
We have two people to speak for the public hearing. First one is Francis Brown. No, we have a public hearing today, too. You're speaking on the public hearing.
Yes.
Go ahead, Francis.
My name is Francis Brown. How much more does the city have to give to MBHS? Isn't it better enough that we had to give up some of our rich history downtown? Why are we willing to trade our city properties where the Utica Police Fleet Maintenance Facility and its impound lot sits for an empty lot where the old H.J. Bradley Corpse building used to be? The other particles MBHS wants for the empty lot is the auxiliary parking for police officers to park their personal vehicles. Don't you drive your vehicle to and have safe and adequate parking? The secure parking area is also used for guests of the court system. An opinion to fill up them spots is to allow city court administration personnel, New York court officers, and other persons that make our court system work behind the scenes to have an adequate, safe parking. This will not just affect the police station, but the courthouse, too. Utica needs our court's system to keep justice in place and to keep our check and balance system. The Utica Police Department Fleet Maintenance Facility was completed only in 2005. I do not have the exact numbers for it being built, but I can say in 2004, the city authorized $7.1 million in serial bonds, of which 1.5 million was for reconstruction of various city facilities and buildings. In 2005, another $170,000 of that bond was moved from one cop capital project to the police maintenance facility project, H-53197211C17. If somebody would give me the information on that, I'd give you the exact numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis.
Our next speaker is Bodan Rabarski? Yep, speaking on, Rabarski? Yes. Go ahead. He said this was by the hearing? Yeah, public hearing. Okay. This is a...
This is a public comment.
This is... This is a public comment. Okay.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Bodan, honestly, if you were the only two saying, is there anybody else saying up your public commenting period?
No, that's all right. Close the public hearing.
We got a public comment saying.
Close the public comment, or close the public hearing and then open up to public comments.
So we're going to close the public hearing. And now I need a motion, a second, to pull out of committee? So we can vote on it? A second.
Since you're standing up there, you got a vote.
Yeah, ordinance of approval for the designation of Mohawk Valley Health System as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of the general municipal law for the purpose of purchasing the portions of certain properties shown on...
Ziv A.
Votes, please.
Nine e's adopted.
Enough public comment period. This gives the citizens an opportunity to come up to the podium and discuss issues pertaining to the city. Each individual will be given three minutes. Our first speaker is Bodan Rabarski. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bodan Rabarski. I live in a beautiful North Utica neighborhood, as Sam calls it over the bridge. I'm here to talk about, a couple weeks ago, I had asked our city clerk, Melissa Shortino, if we could possibly have our flyers such as this put on our city's website to notify people in the city about our Neighborhood Association meetings, which I'm one of four people that run the North Utica Neighborhood Association. And so she said she'd take care of it. And then the other morning, I got an email from the IT department saying that after consulting with the IT department, we were advised that they were unable to do so, that only directly related city official business can be put on the city's website. So I looked on the city's website, and on the bottom of the city's website, under menu, is a community page. On the community page, you have, says, "Utica starts with you." And if you scroll down, it talks about the city government, the Utica population, culture, education, and it also has a link to Neighborhood Association. And it lists all seven of the Neighborhood Associations that are already on there. All we're asking for is a link to the associations, nothing more. And that's why we have an IT department. Now, unless the city is using Windows 95 and they can't do it, I don't see what the problem is. It's all I gotta do is provide a link to the Neighborhood Associations that's already on the website, so this way, people in the city can see our flyers, whether it's North Utica, West Utica, or any other associations. And it gives the people a little more transparency, they can see what's going on, they can find out when the meetings are, and anything else that goes on with the city. And, you know, and provide a lot more information about it. You got, you know, people coming off the throughway, they want to find out what restaurants to use, what hotels to use. You got Travani coming into the area soon. You got an e-bike business coming into the city soon. People are gonna be looking for housing, you're gonna want information. You know, we gotta have a more user-friendly website and make it more accessible and more transparent to the people. I don't know how often, you know, you check the website, but the city's website really is not very user-friendly. And that's all we're asking for, is just some minor adjustments, and I don't really see why it'd be that difficult. You know, it's to provide a couple links on something that's already there. We're not trying to, we're not asking to reinvent the wheel, we're just trying to ask for some adjustments to it, and that will be it. And we're already providing, you know, the mayor's secretary sends out media advisories and press releases to our Neighborhood Association emails that we send out to all our members to the associations. I personally sent out probably 100, 125 emails to 125 people every time we get an email from Rebecca DeValle to notify people of different press releases that she sends out, which is great, the people love it. I get emails constantly thanking me for it. And it's great transparency from the government, and that's, you know, what the government's for, to serve the people. We're not, the people aren't here to serve the government. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Francis Brown. Hi, Francis. Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Francis.
First off, don't you think I tried emailing, calling, and other means of reaching out to our city's officials before my first speech on February 26, 2025? All unanswered or signing with my scum lord due to his status. So, a $200 fine will allow you to spray foam the corner of the building, of which is a supporting wall to your structure. It will allow you not to complete the repairs, or to make it a habitable structure, even though the rotted hole was so large that I could put my camera in it. If you don't believe me, check it out on the Utica The Good, The Bad, The Ugly on YouTube. Apparently, spray painting a city curb, illegally parking numerous times, breaking a city tree will get you a street sign for your shop that your LLC is not even four months old. Yet, I am talking, yes, I am talking about Habano Cigars. You know, the proposed Resolution Number Five, last meeting. This is also submitted to the council the day prior, voiding the three-day Thursday rule, also was not online till the morning of. Why was this done? Because someone thought I was going to be incarcerated. That same person is an investigator for the United County Public Defender's Office that had access to my case, just like access to the video that would have cleared me of the charges before the trial even started, that came up missing. I know the video exists, due to me putting in a complaint and being informed by the supervisor reviewed that video. Therefore, Jimmy Diaz of Habano Cigars, where did that video go? For that one, the city should just give him a neon sign on the taxpayers' dollars. I also see how quickly they put it up. Drop more important work that needs to be done in the Department of Public Works to make the mayor's friend his sign for his bad that he has done. For all the criticizers of the Department of Public Works in Parks Department and in regards to the litter, one, not like they are the ones making the mess. Two, they don't have the staff to stay on top of it 24/7. Three, if it really bothers you so much, clean it up yourself, especially in your neighborhood. Don't forget to check out the Utica, the Good, the Bad, and the Ugly for more ups, updates, and happy Constitution Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francis. Next speaker, James Paul. Hi, James. Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, James.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Paul, uh, founder and executive director of Black Acres, Inc. We're a nonprofit over in Corn Hill. Uh, it's recently been brought to my attention that the city has some concerns with, uh, the variance that we received to have that property. There are eight variances. I won't go into those here. I'd like to say that I'm committed to that community. I'm committed to making sure that the community, uh, the Corn Hill Community Revitalization Program, uh, is a success. We have protests that we put out. We've got a big backing in the community, and I'd like to just get here of public record and ask that, ask for a meeting, actually, with the, uh, the mayor to discuss this further. Thank you.
Mr. Paul, may I ask a question? Who brought those concerns to you? Because I have not heard anything, um, as a sitting official, so I'm just.
So as a.
If you can, give me a little background, I would appreciate it.
Two weeks ago, I get a, an email with my variances and the eight variances and what I need to do. And, and I know that they're there. And I respond to those variances in an email, uh, with, uh, Marcus Phillips. Uh, and that was that. Last week at the Corn Hill Neighborhood Association, uh, Mr. Irving made a comment that, and I wasn't there, so I get that, it gets back to me that. The comment was made that we are not in compliance with those variances and that the city's looking to shut down the business. So that gets me fired up. I call Marcus. Marcus has the information. He said no one's asked him for the information. He doesn't have a concern with the information that I provided him on the status of where we are. Uh, so I don't know where it started. I don't know who wants the information, and no one's come to him to get the information, even though it's been requested somehow, somewhere. So, uh, I'd like to talk with the mayor and, and see if we can get this straightened out.
Thank you, James.
Sure. We have no guest speaker. Report of city officers, Fire Chief Andersall.
Uh, yeah, just a few things. Um, on Tuesday, October 7th, at 11:00 a.m. in Albany at the Capitol Building, um, there is a firefighter memorial service. Former Fire Chief Russell Brooks's name is gonna be one of the hundred-something names that's gonna be added to the, uh, New York State Fallen Firefighters Memorial Wall during the ceremony, so, um, the fire department will obviously be attending, and, uh, we welcome anyone else, uh, to attend the ceremony as well. It is in Albany on October 7th. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, thanks to Assemblywoman Marianne Button-Shawn, she, uh, has successfully, um, pushed for two separate grants that we just received. Uh, one was a $50,000 grant for the purchase of, uh, uh, personal protective equipment, new coats, uh, turnout gear, uh, fire helmets that will go to outfit, uh, 10 firefighters. And the other grant is a $250,000 grant, uh, for the Fire Academy Building at 1320 Bleecker Street. With that grant money, uh, we are putting a new roof on that building, repointing, uh, a lot of the exterior bricks. Obviously, that building goes back to 1906, and, uh, we're gonna be updating, uh, a few of the bathrooms and, uh, putting some, uh, TLC into that building. So thank you, Assemblywoman Button-Shawn for that.
Thank you, chief.
Captain Jim Holt, UCD.
Police Department has nothing, uh, to report on, and, uh, next week we'll be, uh, working some events. Uh, Falling Leaves Race will be next Sunday, and, uh, then we have St. Cosma down in Allen. But, uh, we come up next, uh, next weekend as well. Other than that, we got nothing.
Thank you, cap.
Marcus Lekolowski, DTW Commissioner.
Nothing to report.
Chief Mike Gentile from the mayor's office.
Uh, nothing to report.
Thank you, chief.
Brian Thomas, Urban and Rural.
Nothing to report.
We do have a cash report.
City of Utica cash report for August 2025 totals $36.835 million, receiving filed.
Petitions from officers and appeals. We'll start with first district council member, Katie Il.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was looking at, um, units in between meetings here, and I was, uh, looking through with the police recruitment line. I guess this is a question I have for the administration, seeing that we are down, uh, we have vacancies in the police department, and the police recruitment line for ARPA still has, it says shy of $300,000. So I'm wondering if by next meeting, we can just, uh, get an update on if that is the true and accurate number, and even so, what is the recruitment plan going forward? And that is my only statement for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Second district council member, Majority Leader Robert Bermanster.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. All I wanna do is thank the Department Heads for coming to the meeting, weekend, week out. It's nice to see the support, and I wanna just reach out to each and every one of you, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Third district council member and president pro temp, Joseph Pico.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, I don't have anything to, to pass tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth district council member, Ray Kirkholm.
What time is that memorial, uh?
It's, uh, 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October 7th.
Okay, I have nothing.
Thank you. Fifth district council member, Vanessa Sova.
Um, just, hey, I wanna thank Mark. Um, some of the people that I would've tried to help him out with, with the laborist position, I didn't want you to know I didn't have anybody that was capable or ready to do that yet, so, you know, there's gonna be a lot of questions about, people ask me all the time, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you? We, um, didn't have anybody that was ready yet, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for what I have to vote for tonight, 'cause I couldn't find anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sixth district council member, Joseph Beatrice.
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. The only, uh, thing I have is just a reminder that on, uh, Monday, 9/22, the North Utica Association, um, meeting, um, we have in a format for the, uh, common council at-large candidates. I believe the for, I believe in October, it, they will have another, um, forum for the other elected officials running and the county officials running. And a reminder that myself, uh, and, um, Representative Gentile will be there from 5:30 to 6:30 for our monthly office hours, and this meeting goes from 6:30 to, uh, um, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member and minority leader, um, at-large, Bart Williamson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to, nothing to say. Good to go.
Council member at-large, Samantha Alyssa Mountesta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, it's been a busy couple of weeks, uh, getting back to school. Um, I just wanna remind everybody, if you're around a school zone, um, if you're, you see a school bus with a stop sign up, please stop. Um, it's very important that our children are still, you know, trying to ramp up back to school, and, you know, that safety is, is the, the most important part to it. Um, I wanna thank, um, Coach Nassif. This past weekend, we had a alumni softball game against the girls varsity team. It was very nice to see, um, girls that graduated from, uh, the Proctor High School, um, softball team. Um, this past weekend, there were over 40 participants, um, from the graduating class of 1988 all the way up to 2016, 2000, uh, almost up to 2020. So we had a great time, um, it was, it was very nice, and I'm looking forward to it next year. Lastly, I wanna, uh, wish a happy birthday to my favorite triplets. Um, it's their 12th birthday today. Dordano, Rocco, and Anthony. Happy 12th birthday. Thank you.
Relay the message.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Am I watching?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Jack, Jack turned 70. All right, nobody cares. No, I'm just kidding. Happy se, happy 70th birthday, Jack, too.
Takes after his dad. Thank you.
And happy 50th birthday, Pat.
Council member at-large, um, Jack LaMedicall.
I don't know what to say after that, she just persecuted me. Anyways, uh, that, you know, it was about a week ago, we had some damage at Valley View on the greens, and so, uh, you know, if anybody knows anything about that, please give the police a call. You know, that's a course that, you know, everybody in the city uses, they go upon. And for these kids to go on there and destroy it the way they did is, is a real shame, and I hope they're caught. And if you do happen to know who these kids are who are out there, please give the, the Utica Police a call. And, uh, finally, uh, Boden made a good point. You know, we have this, uh, website, uh, that, with the city website, and Mike, I hope you get back to the mayor and ask him how we could fix that so guys like Boden could go in there and, and, you know, and for the North Utica, it just didn't make any sense to me, and I hope we could fix that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, the only thing that I will say is I, I, and Bo, I, I do agree that it should be on the city website. I just think there might be a little part where it does have to do with, like, a meet the candidates forum, where it does introduce council people and new candidates, where that, that part might have to be blurred out and just actually introduce the actual council meeting. So that's it, and I hope they're able to put it on the website if, if that's figured out, 'cause I think that that was the concern.
What was the concern?
That there was like a meet the candidates forum with current candidates and existing cand, that's just my personal opinion, I'm not sure if that's the actual reason, but.
Well, that, that should be a reason you put it on, so the people come out and listen to the candidates.
I get, I get that, but.
You're not putting the candidates out there.
Sometimes people think that it's for political purposes, and just the announcement of the actual meeting might, might suffice.
You're avoiding all the candidates.
Does it, is that? Is that kind of the reasoning behind it?
I don't know.
Okay.
That was just the response that I sent.
Okay.
Was the response I got from my team.
Okay.
I can try and get and talk to him tomorrow.
Yeah, absolutely.
See if it's just maybe just the link and.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Motion and second to introduce proposed resolution number one. Authorizing the sale of beer and wine and spirits to FX Matt Brewery. FX Matt Brewery Summer Concert Kickoff, Thursday, September 18th, 2025, 2:00 p.m. to midnight. Location, FX Matt Brewery. Votes, please.
Nine e's adopted.
Motion and second to introduce proposed resolution number three.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Authorizing the sale of beer and wine and spirits to the Dinghy Bar. Sponsor Dinghy Bar fundraiser, Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Dinghy Bar, 728 Plant Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Votes, please.
Nine e's adopted.
Motion and a second to introduce proposed ordinance number four.
A motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Ordinance waiving residency requirements for the position of automotive mechanic. Votes, please.
Nine e's adopted.
Motion and second to introduce proposed ordinance number five.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Ordinance waiving residency requirement for the position of laborer. Votes, please.
Nine e's adopted.
Anything else?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to pull, um, ordinance number three out of committee. Just the ordinance to give him a designation.
We, we already did that.
We already voted on that. That was thrown in public. Uh, yep.
Yeah. Motion and second. Yeah, we did it.